Call the meeting to order? I'll ask Counselor Funk to give the opening today.
Thank you, Madam Deputy. On February 21st, 2018, Billy Graham passed away. He was the most significant religious figure of the 20th century, and the organization and the movement that he helped spawn continued to shape the 21st century. During his life, he preached in person to more than 100 million people and millions more via television, satellite, and film. Nearly 3 million people have responded to his invitation to accept Jesus into their heart. He proclaimed the gospel to more than any other preacher in history. He became America's pastor, participating in presidential inaugurations and speaking during national crises such as the attack on 9/11. He became the friend and confidant to popes, presidents, queens, and dictators. Billy Graham was born in 1918 in Charlotte, North Carolina. After graduating from Florida Bible Institute, he was ordained as a minister in the Southern Baptist Church in 1939. And there he pastored a small church in suburban Chicago and preached on a weekly radio show. In 1946, he became the first full-time member or staff member of Youth for Christ. His 1994 or 49, sorry, evangelistic tent meetings in Los Angeles brought him to national attention. And his 1957 New York meetings, which filled Madison Square Gardens for four months, established him as a major presence on the American religious scene. Graham was a model of integrity despite scandals and missteps that toppled other leaders and ministers and the succession of televangelists. In six decades of ministry, no one ever leveled a serious accusation of misconduct against him. Graham was also in support of black rights. During the civil rights era, he drew criticism from white segregationists that were furious when he invited Martin Luther King to pray at the 1957 New York Crusade. It was at one such crusade that upon seeing the ropes that segregated the blacks from the whites, he asked the head usher to remove the ropes and that the people could move around freely and mix with each other. And the usher refused to, so Billy Graham left the stage and took down the ropes himself. In 1982, he visited the Soviet Union, agreeing to preach the gospel at an imitation of the government. This touched off a firestorm of criticism. Some even called him a traitor. But instead, but no, no, he insisted that he would go anywhere to preach as long as there were no restrictions on the freedom to proclaim the gospel. Perhaps Graham's lasting legacy is his ability to present the gospel in a way that culture would listen. He did this brilliantly, making use of radio, television, magazines, books, newspaper, movies, satellite broadcasts, and the Internet to spread his message. He also brought the global Christian community together through international conventions. And in many ways, Billy Graham both formed and embodied the evangelical movement. Because up until 1914, it was very much every institution for itself. But from the '50s on, evangelists came together behind Billy Graham and the things he stood for and was committed to. For many of us, we won't remember Billy Graham for all these accomplishments, but we'll always know him as Billy, as he preferred to be called. He entitled his autobiography, Just As I Am: A Humble Reflection, taken from the hymn that was sung most often when he invited people to come forward to renew God's love. And for millions, his humility before the Almighty God encouraged them to approach with that same spirit. I was raised in a home by an evangelist. My mom was an evangelist. I don't ever remember a time where we didn't have a campout or I got close to a friend or my mom didn't do exactly what Billy Graham did and give that friend a chance to accept Jesus Christ. And so when Billy Graham, growing up, Billy Graham was a very common name in our home. We had their tapes. My dad always listened to his specials. When it was on, there was nothing else we watched on TV except Billy Graham. And so when I heard he had passed away, it was kind of serious for me. And this weekend, Fox had a special. And I watched the special, and one thing that stuck out on that special is a picture of Billy Graham and three of his companions. And they were on one knee praying on the grounds of the White House. And what happened was they were visiting with President Eisenhower. And when they came out, he was met with reporters and cameras. And they asked him about his visit. So he told them about his visit. And then he said, "We talked and we prayed." And they said, "Can you reenact the prayer?" So they bowed down and they prayed for the president. On the national scene, the photo will always be there. And it convicted me that I don't pray, I don't nearly pray enough for our government. So I was hoping in my opening that we could bow our heads and fold our hands and just say a quick prayer. "Lord God, we just thank you for this day. We thank you, Lord, of all the things, the blessings you've given us. Lord, we thank you for Billy Graham and that you raised him up to lead us in the way he did. Lord, I pray for the Graham family now as they are mourning the loss of their father, their grandfather. Lord, I pray that you'll be with them and give them hope. Lord, I just pray now, and I thank you so much for the men and women that have sacrificed self and things for leadership of our country. Lord, I thank you that you raised them up. I pray now that you'll give them wisdom and you'll give them conscience and that they will rule over us and lead us with that wisdom and conscience. And Lord, I just pray now that as the, in the future, as good and difficult times come, that you will again just give them the wisdom in making the right decisions for us. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen."
Thank you, Counselor Funk. We'll move to the agenda. Do we have a motion to adopt the agenda, please? Susan Penner? Counselor Siemens? All in favor? Thank you. Okay, we'll go to the minutes of February 20. Do I have a motion to adopt the minutes of February 20? Counselor Funk? Counselor Swagstraw? Any questions, comments? All those in favor? Carried. Thank you. It is past 7:35. Oh, we'll go to business arising from the minutes. There's no business arising from the minutes. So we'll go to the public hearing. We'll go to conditional use, 21801 on Reimer Avenue. Page five. And Mr. Warrenton, can you introduce this for us, please?
Yes, Madam Deputy Mayor and members of council. This is a conditional use application, file CU-2018-01 for properties with civic address of 305, 311, 315, 325, and 329 Reimer Avenue. The owner and applicant of the application is Steinbeck Credit Union Limited. The purpose of the conditional use application is to allow a surface parking lot to be located on the subject properties. Notices pursuant to the planning act have been issued. There is no written correspondence on file. With respect to the application, the City of Steinbeck zoning bylaw does require the construction of surface parking lots within the city's central business district pod to be subject to a conditional use hearing. That was the purpose of the application. The reports and recommendations from administration are provided in the package. And with respect to the overall application, if the city council feels that the application is consistent and compatible with the city zoning bylaw and CBD policies, the recommendation is to approve subject to the execution of a development agreement.
Thank you. I realized I did not close the council meeting and open the public hearing, so I will do that. Thank you, Mr. Warrenton. Is the applicant here today? No one is here to represent this. All right. Are there any questions from council? Counselor Siemens?
Through you to administration. Is it, this parking lot, once, are they the full authority or has this become a public parking lot in off-hours? Is there any, has there been any discussion in that regard?
With the fact that the applicant is not present, I'll refer to the application that was submitted at the time of processing the request. If council would wish to refer to page 12, it does indicate that the specific use or purpose of the application is to relieve the parking at current locations and additional parking for staff with the expectation that the Steinbeck Credit Union properties on Main Street are the two properties to be serviced by this proposed parking lot.
Counselor Swagstraw?
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. If I could get some clarification, because yeah, I was just looking at that page. And I'm particularly interested in the statement, "Potential for city use" during hockey, summer in the city, parade, et cetera. Obviously, there's significant potential benefit for the city in regards to use and such, but we don't have anyone here to explain to us what type of access the public would have. Are we talking about during non-credit union hours or is there a different stipulation here? Is there any way we can get that clarification in terms of, because the significant, the benefit to the city is that if that parking lot is accessible to the, is accessible to the public? That's, that would be the key benefit.
Mr. Warrenton, do you have any information?
If it's a form of a question, I could perhaps answer.
It's a question, yeah. Could we firm that up a little bit?
Perhaps, it's not much clarification, but I can confirm there's been no formal negotiations as to that potential. But that could certainly be explored.
Counselor Penner?
You. Is there any concern that this parking lot will be taking up considerable frontage on a main corridor, commercial corridor, that we would think it's unfortunate that all this frontage would be used for parking instead of businesses? Is there any concern from our side that we would be taking up this much land for parking?
I will respond with respect to the existing building that the Steinbeck Credit Union used to occupy on Main Street. The understanding that I have is the application is to provide the required parking for that site. Despite the location and the fact that it could very well take up valuable frontage downtown, under traditional development, if there was any other development occurring on Main Street that resulted in the building capacity requiring this much parking, it would have to be developed somewhere.
Counselor Swagstraw?
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. This is, this is a difficult situation when we don't have the applicant here. And this question is, I guess, is for the city manager. And I'm not saying we should necessarily do this, but I do need some clarification. Do we have the option of delaying a decision on this until a future meeting where we can have the applicant here to answer questions? I know this is a conditional use, and so I'm not sure whether we have that option, but I just want to ask that question. Is that even, is that even a possibility?
One of two things. If council is wanting to question the applicant or receive more information, my suggestion would be to adjourn the public hearing and reconvene at a later date. However, if council is satisfied with the information presented in the application and it, any questions of the applicant do not pertain to the subject matter, particularly the application to locate the parking lot at its proposed location, the public hearing could be closed and council could table a decision to a later date.
What would council like to do?
Through you, Madam Deputy. Can we, can we take the city manager's first recommendation to adjourn the meeting, the public meeting, and wait until we can get the information that's needed? Because we do need to know what the benefit to the city will be. And I think Susan would, or Counselor Penner would get a better, would get an answer to her question also.
Okay.
Do we need a motion on that? Do we?
Do we need a motion? To adjourn the public hearing?
I do not believe, I don't believe you need a motion, but that would be just a declaration that it's adjourned until such time as can be determined.
So I will then close the public hearing?
Adjourn.
Adjourn the public hearing? Thank you. And ask council what they would like to do? Do we need a motion then?
No, once it's adjourned, then it would be scheduled for a later date. If council's prepared to set that future date now, that would be something that administration could then take care of, the necessary notices, et cetera.
Okay. Does council wish to set a date?
Could we set it through, go through you, Madam Deputy? Could we set it for the next available council meeting, the week 20?
Is everyone in agreement?
Yeah. Does that cause notice issues, but I'm fine with that.
Mr. Warrenton, is that okay for notice issues?
I believe that is workable.
All right, good. Thank you. All right, then we'll go on to 6B, variance V21802 on page 19. And I will close the council meeting and open the public hearing. And Mr. Warrenton, do you want to introduce this, please?
Yes, this is an application for variance, file V-2018-02 for property with civic address of 295 Lowndes Boulevard. Owner of the property is 680-8400 Manitoba LTD with the application, or the applicant being Evan Schinkel and Les Slotin. Purpose of the variance application is firstly to allow a parking aisle width of 20 feet, whereas City of Steinbeck zoning bylaw 2055 requires a minimum of 25 feet. And secondly, to delay the paving of the adjacent parking lot. Notices pursuant to the planning act have been issued. There is no written correspondence on file. With respect to the application, the proposed width of the parking aisle is a 20% reduction of what is required under the Steinbeck zoning bylaw. The concept plan is provided at the time of initial development of the property indicated a standard parking aisle width of 25 feet. Secondly, phase one of the, of the development was initiated in 2003. The paving of the required parking lot was part of the developer submitted site plan, was a condition of permit issuance and pursuant to a signed development agreement. And generally, administration feels the request is contrary to permit compliance requirements established by city zoning bylaw 670. With respect to the application, recommendation is that city council approve the variance application for a reduction in the parking aisle width, should it determine that that application is appropriate. Secondly, a recommendation from administration is that city council deny the variance application requesting the delay in the paving of the parking lot.
Thank you, Mr. Warrenton. Is the applicant here today?
Yes.
Would you like to take the podium? State your name and address? Thank you.
Hello. Thank you all for having me here tonight. My name is Evan Schinkel. I live in Grand Point, Manitoba. I am the owner and operator of Superior Projects. My affiliations to 680 Manitoba Inc. is, I'm the construction manager for Les and his company. I'm also affiliated to Schinkel Properties, the property manager on this property. I would like to take this time to hand out the development plans. On the first application, the internal driveway width, I'd like to bring your attention to, well, first off, the reason we're not able to get to 25 feet is as follows. If we were to, and sheet A is the proposed plan as of 2013. This plan has asphalt being poured directly up to the parjing on building B. This is not a good idea for frost heaving. And we feel that it's, it's a cause to address the issue in addition to, in addition to the other reasons. The other, the other benefit is obviously with a separation, a curb, and some landscape between, you have removed the risk of traffic or cars backing up into building B. So I feel like in sheet two, you see our proposed plan. And that is, is what we hope to build with your permission, where we have some separation, a curb, and in fact, a 20-foot lane width instead of 25. One of the reasons we feel this is an appropriate application is that there is two access routes, both off of Maple and Lowndes Boulevard. And another side benefit is we get some green space to allow for land drainage. Although minimal, it is still a slight benefit in this plan. That's, that's all I had to say on item one. I'd like to draw your attention to item two, the hard surface paving. So in 2014, this building was constructed and completed. After the contractor completed the work, they turned it over to my client. And Schinkel Properties possessed the property. As the property manager, we assisted 680 Manitoba Inc. in performing the paving as you see on site plan on sheet one. We completed the asphalt as shown on the submitted civil drawing and completed 23 stalls of the required 30. The intentions were not, are pure. We simply overlooked the 30-stall parking. We were not aware that there was 30 stalls required here. If there was, we surely would have paved them. Our thought process was simply construction sequence and what was proposed on the drawing that was submitted to, for permit. So we completed as per the gray section surrounding building A and left parcel B for the future construction of building B. With it just being seven parking stalls, if we were to have known that it was just seven parking stalls, we surely would have completed it. However, we have not duly, only because, because, I guess, of unaware and, and the construction sequence. It's not our intentions to not pave these spots. It's 100%, we will be paving them in summer when the plants are open in May or shortly thereafter. The additional 31 stalls you see on our site plan for, on page two, will bring us up to 54 stalls. And those will be completed well prior to the completion and turnover of building B. Building B will be turned over in October. If I may ask your consideration on this? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schinkel. Does council have any questions for the applicant? Counselor Swagstraw?
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. So if I can just, if I can get clarification, how long has your client been the owner of the property?
I believe since 2013. They were involved with building A. However, the notices were sent to the original contractor. And that's, that's all I know. I'm a little bit distant to the, to the knowledge of those notices. However, both the Schinkel Properties and 680 claim to not have received those notices.
Counselor Penner?
You. So just to be clear, you have paid, or the, you, the location has 23 paved spots. You were short seven.
Yep.
But you are planning on completing the full amount of paving required when building B is done, by the time it's done.
That's correct. In site plan that we're proposing on page two, we'll have an additional 31 paved parking stalls. It is a slight economics and logistics. We're not, we're not interested in heating and hoarding for concrete to keep to our schedule and allow us some time in fall to lease the space out. If we were not successful, this would postpone our project significantly.
Counselor Siemens?
Through you to the speaker. But the original owner did come to city council for variance to reduce parking stalls from one and a half per unit to one per unit, and it was denied. You were aware of that?
May I take the podium, please? State your name and address.
My name is Les Slotin. I live in St. Norbert, Manitoba. We did apply to, so we could have more suites in the building. It wasn't not to pave the parking. We would have been paving all the parking anyway. It was just, it was to allow, we wanted to see if we could have one spot per suite because we had a request from a health corporation in Steinbeck for smaller suites. But it wasn't that we were never going to pave. We were always going to pave all the parking spots.
But there has been an outstanding work order here since 2013.
You know, I was completely unaware. I mean, this is just news to me as, when we did this, you know, this variance, when Evan was looking into it. You know, I received the tax bills. I did not receive any, any notice of requirement of parking. We paved the back lane, the entire property. We paved all the spots around the building. We paved the driveway. You know, I did not know that there was more paving required and fully intend to do it. And I'm willing to post a deposit, you know, to, if needed, to, you know, to show my intent.
Counselor Swagstraw?
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. The questions were to administration, but the applicant may want to sort of give a response. So my question to administration is, is through what means and who was the notice sent to in regards to the outstanding work order? The, is there any possibility, was it sent to a different contractor? Any possibility that, did they 100%, these individuals receive that notice?
The City of Steinbeck will, when it issues notices for outstanding items with respect to development of a property, will send notices by regular mail. So there is no way to verify that the addressee has received the correspondence. But with respect, at the time of the initial application for development, December of 2013, the original site engineer, MMM Group, was provided with the information and the requirements as per the letter in the file. Second notice for the outstanding work to be completed was issued January 29th, 2015, with the addressee being 680-8400 Manitoba LTD. The subsequent two notices that were issued by email were issued in February of 2015 and September of 2016. Those notices appear to have been sent to the original contractor. That's the information that's on file. That's the information that's on file. With the response provided by the contractor to the emails, I would gather that the contractor was aware that there were outstanding items related to the development of Phase 1 that required attention.
We were no longer dealing with the contractor. He'd finished the building already, and we did not receive any notices.
Counselor Penner?
The emails went to him, and I assume the mail went to him, too.
Through you to Administration.
Yes.
So with Point 2, are you suggesting or recommending that we require them to pave seven spots before they can start with Building B? And then after that's done, they can do it in two parts? Is that the intent here, that?
The position of Administration is to fairly, consistently, and equitably apply the policies that the City of Steinbach has established. With the issuance of building permits and expecting that developers will comply with the conditions of the permit at the time it was issued, that is what Administration is recommending. One of the conditions that was required was to develop the required parking for Phase 1.
Any other questions for the applicant or Administration? Okay. Is there anyone here wishing to object or have any questions other than the applicant? Anyone wishing to object or have any questions? Thank you. All right, I will close the public hearing and reopen the council meeting. And what would Council like to do? Counselor Penner?
Move to approve the change in width and move to approve the delay in parking.
Can I just clarify, the width you would like to?
20 feet.
To 20?
And then as well, delay the parking for when they will be paving.
All right, do I have a seconder? Counselor Swagstraw, second? All right, go ahead.
Yes, but regarding the first point with changing to 20 feet, I recognize that is narrow. However, 25 feet, we will be changing that in upcoming zoning bylaw to reduce that. So we are moving to smaller lanes to begin with. The plan looks good. They've executed that well. So I think that plan makes sense. Regarding the paving, if they weren't doing Part B, this would be tougher. We'd want those seven spots paved. However, just in terms of the cost of construction and their intention to pave by the time fall is here, I think, that just makes sense to me. We want, we don't want to cause undue hardship. I recognize it should have been done, but in terms of them receiving the notice, there's some confusion there. And I guess we'll just have to take, I will just take that at face value, that they didn't receive it and that's why it was delayed. So I think it makes sense to just allow them to do the paving for, finish this paving and do paving for Unit B all at one time.
Thank you. Counselor Swagstraw?
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. As far as the parking stalls, it's a fairly straightforward application as far as, I mean, the rationale in terms of having the location of the building work better and seems reasonable enough. And the recommendation that we have for Administration is to approve the first part. So that is straightforward. The second one is more difficult because we are faced with a situation where, whether they got the notice of the mail or not, the reality is that there are, we do have standards and we expect them to be upheld. At the same time, there's also, there is a common sense angle at this, too, that I don't want to overlook. And the fact is, is that we have seven stalls that have not yet been paved. So 23 have been paved, seven have not yet. The explanation that if they'd known about those seven, you know, in terms of whatever their communication was, that they would have paved it, it doesn't seem that unreasonable when you consider all the other paving that's happened there and the other work that's occurred. And there's not really much benefit to a developer to intentionally not pave seven parking stalls. And so now we're in a situation where if we deny this, we're basically saying that the second building cannot start until seven parking stalls are paved. Seven stalls. So for the sake of seven stalls, we're going to tell them that, nope, that second building can't start until, you know, months later or next year. And rather, does it not make sense that they're going to pave it anyway and they have to pave the, on Building B here, that you do those seven stalls and the other 31 stalls all at exactly the same time? Just on a practical level, I have not heard any, I mean, I understand the argument. I understand the concern from Administration. But as far as, I'm not hearing anything in regards to negative impact on anyone in terms of either on this property or anywhere nearby. We don't have anyone here objecting. We don't have anyone here raising concerns. We're talking about facilitating. Basically, we're talking about allowing them to pave these seven stalls at the same time as the other 31. And I'm just not convinced enough to say, no, you have to wait several months before the whole building can start because of seven stalls.
Anything further? Counselor Funt?
Through you, Madam Deputy. I have a question and possibly an amendment, if it goes that way. Through you, I'd like to ask the question to Administration. Can, I know Administration's often concerned that we don't have a hammer, that if something like this goes ahead and does not get paved for some other reason, we have no recourse to go after. Can we tie the occupancy permit on Unit B to the finished paving of the Parcel B? Is that something that can be done? If it can be done, can we make an amendment to your, to the motion, if that's okay?
Mr. Workantie?
That is a suggestion. If you refer to the report provided by the city engineer, if there is a situation where Council is prepared to consider the delay, that a condition of the delay should be that the occupancy permit for the new building should not be issued until all required parking stalls are paved for both the new and the existing buildings.
Yeah, I would like to propose an amendment, a friendly amendment.
Friendly amendment? That's fine. That's fine. Okay, good. Then if there's any other comments from Council?
Just to add one thing.
Counselor Swagstraw?
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. Just, the amendment definitely strengthens the motion. And I should point out that this is a significant hammer because if we were tying this to the occupancy permit for the new building, they're not going to build a building. And I haven't said they're empty because they don't want to pave seven parking stalls. Those stalls will get paved, and so will all the rest of it. Otherwise, the building says they're empty. Makes sense to me.
Anything in closing?
Nothing in closing.
Okay. I'll call for the question. All those in favor of the motion? Carried. Thank you. All right, we'll go, oh, I'm sorry, City Manager.
Yeah, if I, if I may interrupt Madam Deputy Mayor. With respect to the previous public hearing for conditional use, 2018-01.
Yes.
Contrary to my comments previously, I would recommend that, at the pleasure of Council, if they would choose to reopen that public hearing, only to hear if there are potential objections or questions from the gallery, that I would recommend be done. And then, the public hearing could then be readjourned to reconvene on March 20.
Okay. Then I will open the public hearing on conditional use, CU 21801, once more, and ask if there's any questions or objections from the audience on this file. Any questions or objections? There being none, then I will close the public hearing and open the council meeting again. Correct?
Adjourned.
Adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm still learning. All right. All right, we'll go to 7. Number 7 on your agenda, the delegation, Manitoba Summer Games, Power Smart 2016. And Trish Ents is here. Please take the podium. Take your name and address for the record.
Good evening. My name is Trish Ents. And with me is Cheryl Peters. I am from the Arm of the Brook Creek. And Cheryl is from Steinbach. 2016, Steinbach played host to Manitoba Summer Games. Manitoba Summer Games has approximately 1,300 athletes, over 400 coaches, and numerous volunteers. My co-chairs, Randy Royseedler and Randy Hildebrandt, are actually at the same time presenting to the Hanover School Board. We are bringing before you the results for the economic impact. This was a study that was done in collaboration with the Steinbach Chamber of Commerce, Sport Manitoba, and the Manitoba Games Host Society. I'm not going to go through it because it's 27 pages, but I will highlight some very exciting points that we're quite proud of. A total of 492 surveys were handed out. The 417 valid responses, so the numbers are based on those valid responses. We had 341 participant family members, 51 spectators, and a variety of other respondents. They used the survey analytic survey, Pocket Software, in consultation with Sport Manitoba and the Steinbach Chamber of Commerce. The survey asked information along the origins of spectators, if they were related to any of the participants, along with the number of days that they were attending the games. Out-of-town participants were also asked about their accommodation use and expenditures within Steinbach. The numbers dictate that we had over 6,000 people participating or watching the games. 1,387 athletes, 459 coaches, managers, and officials, along with almost 4,000 family members. 5,800 were out of town. The survey found that 1 in 11 were not family members. So the games drew not just families coming to watch their kids, but also the community around us as well. 95% of the visitors were new to Steinbach. 90% made same-day travel. This was the largest recorded number of spectators ever. Visitor spending was calculated at $660,000. The combined spending of out-of-town athletes, family members, spectators, and other visitors in combination with the expenditures made by the Host Society totaled $1.9 million, supporting $2.6 million in economic activity in Manitoba, including $2.3 million of economic activity in Steinbach. The 2016 Manitoba Summer Games supported tax revenues totaling $0.5 million in Canada as a whole. The event supported about $1.5 million in federal government tax revenues, an additional $220,000 in province of Manitoba tax revenues, $28,000 in municipal taxes, with $19,000 being in Steinbach. In conclusion, the total net economic activity or other GDP generated by the 2016 Manitoba Summer Games was $1.7 million for Canada, $1.5 million for Manitoba, and $1.2 million for Steinbach. I'll refer to the next handout if there's any questions for anybody. Or do I keep going?
You can keep going.
Okay, sorry. The next presentation we have are the 2016 audited financial statements. That's the next handout. It says, "Financial Statements, Audited Financial." Yeah, that was 23 pages. I sort of skimmed through that. Oops. Nope, keep going. That's the legacy. That's, there you go. That page right there. Perfect. These are the audited financial statements for the years 14, 15, and 16. Our auditor was Deloitte. The Host Society saw revenue and expenditures of about $941,000. We are pleased to present that we did end up in the black. So that's a good thing. With all the overages on the track and everything, I'm pleased to say that our committees tightened their belt and worked extremely hard to ensure that we did come in on budget and slightly above. We never went in this to make money. So the fact that we came in pretty close to on budget is actually, I'm pretty proud of everybody that helped out with that. The actual cost of the games was $941,000. In the financials, we did have a lot of donations of goods and services. So the actual cost, there's about $48,000 of donations that didn't make it into the audit because they were covered off by donations of services. So the actual cost of the hosting the games was $989,000, so just under $1 million, which is what, when we came to you five years ago, we had projected that it would be a $1 million endeavor. A Revenue Generation Committee raised well over $325,000 in cash and donations. We had a record number of merchandise sales. We actually sold out of merchandise day one and had to open the online store. So again, those were events that had never occurred before. And we are quite proud of the program brought forward by our merchandise and our revenue generation people. So hang on to those golf shirts, folks. They're a hot commodity. The next is the legacy. If there's any questions on that one, that's just pretty straightforward. You're all business, you know, to read an audited financial statement. The last piece is our, the legacy piece, our physical and financial legacy of the games. Stony Brook Middle School saw a legacy of $353,000, predominantly a new asphalt track that was laid with landscaping and athletics equipment, which was left behind. Steinbach Soccer Park realized approximately $13,000 with bleachers that were purchased and left behind. Steinbach Aquatic Center with starting blocks, field-to-play equipment, realized approximately $5,300. AD Penner Park with some infields and bleachers realized approximately $26,000. Stawn Park in Mitchell dug out covers and renovations to the baseball diamonds, approximately $2,500. Southeast Halping Hands, this was the food, approximately a cost to us of about $15,000. Youth for Christ, small donation of games that were left over. Agape House, TVs, Xboxes, and games, approximately $1,300. Steinbach Arts Council, TVs and games and controllers, approximately $750. And Supes On received the excess kitchen equipment in approximation of about $1,500. That's the physical legacy left behind by the games, the tangible legacy left behind. The financial legacy, as according to our auditors, we, our budget came in $9,341 over budget. 10%, and it's Sport Manitoba takes 10%. So I'm pleased to state that, as per the multi-party agreement, we have a check for the City of Steinbach for $4,203.45. And the other $4,203 will go to our other partner, the Hanover School Board. I want to thank all our community partners, the city and the school board. Thanks to all our business partners and our numerous volunteers, which were about 1,000. The economic impact studies show that a community is, this community is willing to step up and a government understands the importance of sport in a young person's life and supports endeavors such as these. So, thank you.
Thank you so much. Is there a?
Okay. Thanks.
Bravo, bravo.
Is there any questions?
Is there any questions from Council? Any comments or questions, Counselor Siemens?
Just a comment. Congratulations.
Just a comment. Congratulations. Five years of hard work have gone into this, a lot of concern, angst, as you made the presentations, first to City Council, Hanover School Division, and then to the province. And then there's a lot of unknowns, because I've been part of three of those presentations to the province and not received what you received and what we received. So congratulations. It's a lot of work. And job well done, and just on behalf of the city and myself, too, that I have a fair understanding of what all goes in it, but really, you have to live it in order to really understand. But congratulations to you and the whole committee and all volunteers.
We have phenomenal, we did have a phenomenal team. I'm very proud to be part of an endeavor, and thank you.
Councilor Swagstra.
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. I'll certainly agree with Councilor Siemens' comments, and I just want to say that it's clear this was a good investment on the part of the city and the school division. Even, you know, even without seeing all the numbers here in terms of the, you know, the physical impact and the economic benefits of the city of having all those people here, but just the fact that we were able to host such a thing, and we were all out there at various times during this, it was a great event. So thank you for coordinating this and making it possible, and this was a great investment on the part of the city, so we're really glad that we had this opportunity.
We broke spectator numbers. We did break spectators, recorded spectators. It was just, it was something to see, the number of people from communities that came that didn't have kids. And you expect the parents to come, but we actually, the community stepped up and showed, and it was just driving down, you know, Brant Street and seeing all the people on the berm watching the track and field. It was just, it was amazing.
Anything else from council? All right, we'll thank, Councilor Funk.
Through you, Madam Deputy. I too want to say thank you. It was a joy and a pleasure to work with you on this, too. We were one of the sponsors, and we got to do, we had to meet so many people, brought so many people to Steinbach, and we ended up watching a lot of baseball games, my favorite. And I played hooky from work, and I turned my phone off and went and watched ballgames. Something I never do, so thank you for that, for what you've done for the community. And it was just great to see everybody getting balls and doing what they do.
Well, thank you for your support.
I'll just say on behalf, too, of Mayor Gerson, I'm sure he would be as well extending his thank you for your very hard work, for all of the organization and the efforts that you made to put such a wonderful community event together. Thank you. All right, we'll move to page 34, Reports and Recommendations of City Manager, the Fire Department Rescue Truck Tender Award. Page 34. Rona, do you want to introduce this?
So the purpose of this is to award the contract for the purchase of a heavy wet rescue vehicle. The tender for this closed on February 8, 2018, with two bids received. One bid was disqualified. The recommendation is to award the contract to Kuwaiton Truck Services in the amount of $802,296.99. Based on the tender specifications, a review of the submitted bid identified that items were not required and could be removed to allow for a reduction in overall cost. Recommended deletions of $18,000 approximately, which included a thermal imaging camera and equipment mounting, will allow for the project to be fully funded. Recommendation is to award the contract to supply a heavy wet rescue vehicle to Kuwaiton Truck Services for a reduced scope in the amount of $784,296.99 plus applicable taxes.
Thank you. Does council have any questions? Do I have a motion? Councilor Siemens?
Thank you. Make a motion to approve.
Seconded by Councilor Funk. Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Deputy. This is one thing that we have always prided ourselves in the city of Steinbach, is that we have good quality equipment for firefighting units, and this would speak to that as well. The fact that they reviewed the tenders, and really, there's only one tender accepted because of default, and they've gone through that. So to spend $784,000 on a heavy wet rescue vehicle, I'm not quite sure what that is, but it is something that is needed within our force, and I would make a motion to approve that.
Councilor Funk?
I don't have that much to, or three, Deputy Mayor, I don't have that much to add, but I know that the amount of times I hear the sirens, I know that new equipment is needed, they're using it, and I think we need to give our team the very best that they can use.
Thank you. I understand that the heavy wet rescue is actually a rescue vehicle, and it has the ability to pump water. I think I have that correct. Okay, I'll call for the motion. All those in favor? Carried. Thank you. Okay, we'll go to 8B, page 37, Capital Works Projects for 2018. Rana, do you want to again explain that?
Sure. The purpose of this is to award the contract for the 2018 pavement management program and sidewalk construction on Lindhurst Gate, Brighton Lane, Park Hill Crescent, and Quaker Avenue. The tender closed on February 22, 2018, with six bids received. Recommendation by the project engineer, SCB Inc., is to award the tender to Maple Leaf Construction Limited in the amount of $598,658, subject to funding availability. Recommendation is to award the tender to Maple Leaf Construction Limited, being the low bid, in the amount of $598,658,000 plus GSD.
Counsel, how would you like to proceed? Councilor Swagstra?
Motion to approve the tender.
Approve, seconded. Councilor Siemens, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. Obviously, our pavement management program and sidewalk construction is a major project that takes place in the city of Steinbach every year, and so we have an open bidding process, and in this case, Maple Leaf Construction submitted the low bid, and they meet all the technical requirements in order to be able to do this. Obviously, it's important we continue to maintain our streets, and this pavement management program is a key part of that, and also that we continue constructing new sidewalks in our new neighborhoods to make sure that we're providing places for people to walk. And so this makes sense for us to approve.
Anything further? Nothing further? Anything further from council? Call for the question. All those in favor? Carried. Thank you. All right, we'll go to number nine, Administration Accounts Payable, on the back of the book. Do I have a motion? Councilor Funk, Councilor Penner? Any comments? Call for the question. All those in favor? Thank you. And then we'll go to 9B, Financial Statements Ending December 31, 2017, at the back of your book. Do I have a motion, please? Councilor Siemens, seconded by Councilor Penner? Anything to add? Okay, I'll call for the question. All those in favor? Thank you. Carried. Go to 9C, Bylaw 2092, first reading, page 42 in your book. And I believe this requires a little bit of explanation from Mr. Workington, please.
Yes, members of council, this Bylaw 2092 is an application to rezone property with civic address of 47 First Street in Steinbach, from RLD residential low density to RMD residential medium density, to allow for multifamily buildings to be built on the site. The recommendation is that council give this bylaw first reading. That would permit the public notices to be issued and a public hearing to be scheduled. And at this time, the expected date of the public hearing would be April 27.
Seventeen.
Seventeenth, sorry.
Anything further?
That is it.
Okay. How would council like to proceed? Councilor Penner?
Would you approve?
Move to approve, seconded by Councilor Siemens.
Straightforward. This just allows for public notices and to go out and ask to hear from the public on this.
Very good. Anything to add? Anything from council? Call for the question. All those in favor? Carried. Thank you. We'll go to 9D, Bylaw 2064, Water and Wastewater Rates, second and third reading, page 57. And Mr. Workington?
Yes, members of council, this Bylaw 2064 has been a long time in the making. The city of Steinbach, as a matter of routine, will typically review its water and wastewater rates about every three to four years. And the city did proceed with that schedule and submitted a rate adjustment application to the Public Utilities Board in May of 2016. Public Utilities Board has now responded and has approved the city's application, subject to city council completing the second and third reading of Bylaw 2064. And generally, well, I should say, there is significant detail in the material. However, on page 58 of the agenda package, it does provide a very succinct summary as to the general impact of the proposed rate increase with respect to comparison to current rates. And the average residential customer impact will be approximately $1 a month in each of 2018, 2019, and 2020, which is the proposed schedule of the new rates. I would add that the current water and sewer rates have not changed since January 1, 2016. Recommendation from administration is that council proceed with second and third reading.
Thank you. Counsel? Councilor Penner? Move to approve, seconded by Councilor Swagstra. Go ahead.
Well, as Mr. Workington stated, we haven't made any adjustments on this in a couple of years. So with inflation and just keeping up with our water infrastructure, it's important that we keep in line with increasing, those increasing costs so we can continue to provide good service when it comes to water.
Thank you. Councilor Swagstra?
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. We need to charge the amount that the service actually costs. That's why we have the ongoing plan in regards to making sure that the rate increases are kept at the level of what the service actually is, and that's why the increases in the 3% range. And this has been approved by the Public Utilities Board, so everything's been checked in that regard, and so it makes sense to make sure that we're providing a good service and charging with the actual value of the services.
Thank you. Anything else from council? Anything in closing? Okay, I'll call for the question. All those in favor? Thank you. Carried. Go to 9E, Appoint Municipal Weed Inspector. Oh, third reading. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, call for third reading. Do I have a motion? Councilor Siemens, Councilor Funk, any comments? Call for the question. All those in favor of third reading? Thank you. Carried. Now we'll go to 9E, Weed Inspector, page 87. Mr. Workington?
Recommendation to the requirement from the province of Manitoba, there is a draft resolution on page 88. Recommendation is that council pass that resolution.
Do I have a motion? Councilor Siemens, seconded by Councilor Swagstra, go ahead.
Just to approve that we appoint Trevor Schalberg, Community Services Officer, as the Noxious Weed Inspector.
Thank you. Anything to add? Anything from council? Call for the question. All those in favor? Thank you. Go to Business Licenses, page 89. Do I have a motion? Councilor Funk, seconded by Councilor Swagstra? Anything? No comment? Okay, I'll call for the question. All those in favor? Thank you. Go to 9G, Building Permits, page 90. Current month is 1 point, nearly $1.6 million. Do I have a motion? Councilor Funk? Councilor Siemens, any comment?
I think that's a pretty good start to the year. Basically done two months, we're already at 6.3 million. I think that's starting a healthy year off.
Sounds, looks good, doesn't it? Any other comments from council? Okay, call for the question. All those in favor? Thank you. Carried. We'll go to number 10. Any questions of council? Councilor Funk?
Yes, through you, Madam Deputy. I have a statement and then a question. It's been brought to my attention this last week. We've talked many times about the Canadian Summer Job Program. Councilor Penner opened up last week with it. And what's, to enlighten you on what's happening right now is organizations and institutions in our community are receiving their applications back as incomplete, and so they have 10 days to refile. The challenge they have is that they can't in good faith agree with the attestation that's put in front of it. So my question to council today is, do you feel, or could you support, writing a letter to the Prime Minister and the Minister of Employment to ask them to remove that from the summer jobs program? Summer jobs program has been very important to many, many institutions and organizations across Canada, and now they're forced to, in some cases, agree to something that by good faith they can't. And it's a values test that I think is, it's a challenge to put all these things on a values test, or a values test on money that is so key and pivotal of these community institutions and organizations. And I would just like to ask if we could, if you would support that, writing a letter to the office and the Minister of Employment?
Mr. Workington, do we require a motion for something like that?
The question has been put, so I would suggest yes.
Thank you. Would you like to make that a motion? Do I have a seconder? Councilor Penner? Go ahead.
Yes, thank you. I'd like to, I would really like to write a letter to the Prime Minister and to the Minister of Employment, because I think that this is an unfair values test that's put on by our government. It was put on late in last year, just before Christmas, and it changes the program that these organizations were getting funding for their summer. And it also scares me to, what's next? Are we going to have a values test to receive EI, CPP, baby checks? What is coming next? I don't think, I think our government's job is to provide a safe country where we can have an opinion, where we can have differences. And I think, too, if we all agree, I think our community, our country, will be lacking. And that's why I would really like, if we could create solidarity behind these organizations, behind these institutions that are key and pivotal, do great things in our community, and I'd like to support them with a letter from us.
Thank you. Anything else?
Yes, the reality is, a lot of these groups that cannot check the box do a lot of heavy lifting in terms of social programs, in terms of what they offer and provide to Canada. So in that way, it is concerning as to what the impact will be if a lot of these organizations don't receive the funding. By forcing organizations to check the box, basically you're forcing them to agree to a state religion, a state worldview, that for some reason the state knows better or is more enlightened than maybe the average Canadian on what we should believe. And that is highly concerning, because as Councilor Funk stated, what's next? What's next if we have to support the government's view on things? As he stated, the job of a democratic government is to provide a safe place for people to hold their values, not impose their values and ultimately religion on others.
Thank you. Anything else from council? Anything in closing? Well, council, this is something that has certainly been in the minds of many people in the city of Steinbach.
in the city of Steinbach, many business people that have relied on the Summer Jobs Program. I think it is a good idea for us to also express our support for those people that, because of their values and, and beliefs, cannot in good conscience check that box. So I will also vote with the motion, all those in favor of the motion. Thank you, carried. We'll move to number 11, Correspondence and Petitions, Minister of Infrastructure, Traffic Safety Measures, page 91. Mr. Workington?
This is just a letter, I believe council is aware of the general announcement that the province of Manitoba has made with respect to signalization at the intersection of PTH 52 West and Industrial Road, and the, the recommendation that the signals be installed sometime during the 2018-19 capital program, and further, it's just confirmation of further requests council has forwarded to the minister previously to further investigate the suitability of some kind of pedestrian crossing mechanism along PTH 12. This is just a letter of confirmation that the, the province is still looking into that matter.
Any comments from council?
Well, council, this is something we, we have heard that is happening, which is very good news for our city, that has been a place that we have been concerned about for a long time, Industrial Road and 52, and we've had numerous accidents and, and motor vehicle incidents there, so we're very happy that the Minister of Infrastructure has given us the go-ahead for that, and we will continue to wait for the pedestrian crossing that we've asked for along PTH North, near the Steinbach Christian School, and hopefully they will come up with a helpful recommendation for that as well. We'll take that as information. Then, page 92, I believe was an error, as it already has been addressed, so we'll go to 11B, Sane Rat River Conservation District, Manager's Report, January 16, take that as information. We'll go to 11C, page 98, Manitoba Swim Ability, 2018 Grant Request, we'll take that as information as well, you've all had a chance to read it. We'll go to 11D, on page 100, Westman Opportunities Leadership Group, Participation and Support. Any comments, any action you want taken? We'll take that as information as well. Go to number 12, Other Business, There Being No Other Business, I will call for adjournment. May I have a motion, please? Councilor Funk, seconded by Councilor Siemens, Siemens, all those in favor. Thank you.